Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or corrections to our agenda?
No, Madam President.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our recognitions and presentations with Mrs. Jennifer Bradford Vernon. We'll start with our Horizon Awards.
Salina USD 305 presents the Horizon Awards to teachers who have demonstrated excellence during their first full year of teaching. We are proud to announce this year's Horizon Award recipients. Ashley Winger, science teacher at Salina West Education Center, and Jericho Johnson, third grade teacher at Cottonwood Elementary School. Ashley Winger. Ashley came to alternative education through the Transition to Teaching Program, which fills secondary teaching openings using an alternate route to teacher licensure. She had earned a degree in biology and brought experience as a pathology specimen specialist. To this she added substitute teaching and education courses through Fort Hays State University. The outcome was a terrific first year of teaching at the alternative program. Rex Bowley, principal at Salina West Education Center, shares, "I truly believe that what Ashley has brought to Salina West and to our students is priceless." I now invite Ashley to the podium.
Thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to have both of us here today. It's truly been an honor to represent Salina Public School District and Salina West as the Kansas Horizon Award recipient. But I guarantee no educator gets into this for the recognition. In fact, I'll be honest, I never wanted to be a teacher. My parents were both school educators, and I grew up loathing education. However, everything changed when I had the opportunity and the privilege to work as a long-term substitute that helped pave the way towards this gratifying and challenging career. A career that I never imagined developing and maturing in an alternative program. But when I reflect on my first year teaching experience, beginning at an alternative program was truly a blessing in disguise. Over the past two years, I've been confronted with two questions over and over again. Where do you teach and what is an alternative program? Let's be honest, they're not wanting to know those questions. What they want to know is, do I teach those students? Those defiant ones? Those dangerous ones? Those that cannot be saved? And my answer is always the same. I have yet to meet a kid unworthy of my time and my ability to try to educate them. I've also learned that the word "alternative" has a multitude of different meanings for others. You ask anyone at Salina West, "alternative" means flexibility. The type of flexibility which allows teachers to create a curriculum that is relevant, essential, and engaging to our students. Lessons focused on career development just as much as content. The flexibility and authenticity of our schedule is just one area that keeps me teaching at Salina West. But it's the culture and the atmosphere that is the most appealing for both students and teachers. Many schools struggle with the likeness of cohesiveness in school culture. At Salina West, the culture is driven by family. Our we offer a place for students to learn in a nonjudgmental and caring environment surrounded by family members. Students come to us feeling alone, but when they leave, they've acquired many brothers and sisters, all willing to lend a helping hand. I love my job, and I love the kids that I work with. So naturally, I put everything into my work and ensure that my students have a different experience in my classroom, both academically and personally. The students in Salina deserve a loving and passionate teacher in their corner, someone who is unwavering and provides a positive voice of reason. It's our job to make sure every student walks away with nothing more than a positive and memorable experience from our time together. And let me tell you, every staff member at Salina West works tirelessly to provide nothing but the best for our students. We exhaust our resources providing an alternative, unique learning experience where all of our students have a unique, have the opportunity to thrive. Every student is unique and deserving of a good teacher who is willing to work hard in the classroom for them. Without a doubt, my coworkers are the best of the best, often sacrificing themselves for the betterment of our students because, let's be honest, working in an alternative program is tough. And statistically speaking, we have, we experience a higher turnover rate due to teacher burnout. Many of us get into education to make a difference in this world, but ironically, it's the students that impact us the most. And let me tell you, the past two years, I've learned so much about teaching, but mostly about myself. And for that, I'm forever grateful for the opportunity to teach at Salina West. Thank you again for having us here today, and I look forward to continuing my career with Salina Public Schools.
In her first year of teaching, Jericho already understood the importance of intention. Since the start of her career, her actions and choice of words while teaching had a purpose. Her classroom is evidence of her intention that her students will excel both academically and behaviorally. And because of a caring and positive relationship with her students, they do whatever it takes to reach her expectations. Jericho's future in teaching is bright. As her principal Kyle Griffiths notes, "Jericho has a positive effect on all of her students. The wonderful part is that Jericho is just beginning." I invite Jericho to the podium.
A question that is constantly running through my mind is what exactly puts kids at ease in the classroom? And then it dawned on me. Sometimes you have to teach students in a way that makes you happy. When the teacher is happy, the students, they can see that. When it comes to my teaching style, there are two concepts that I value: relationships and humor. So what is exactly teaching through relationships? Ultimately, it describes the complex social environment in which students and teachers converse, share experiences, and participate in activities that together make for engaged learning. Once I got a grasp on what teaching through relationships is, I began to think, what exactly is my role in all of this? First, it's all about getting to know their learning styles, their abilities, and much more. What I value more than all of that is their interests, personalities, and their background. Relationships, not only with my students, but with my parents as well, is key. Parents trust you with their most prized possession, so it's crucial to build that foundation with them as well. Plus, let's just be honest, if there's ever an issue, that parent will always have your back. While building these relationships is when I discovered humor in the classroom. I always tell my students that laughter can reduce stress. Plus, I just want them to have fun learning. The more fun they have, the more likely they are to retain the information. Through humor and building these relationships with my students and their parents is when I found all their morning narratives to start having more of a meaning. It allowed for me to connect with them on a level I could have never imagined. The excitement on their faces when they come to school and want to tell me, for example, about the new carpet that's being laid in the house, and just to show me a picture of a bunny that just happens to always be looking at its rear end. Even moments at conferences when parents are saying things like, "My child is having way too much fun in my cla- in your classroom." And other comments like, "My daughter has been practicing her Beyonce walk that she said you taught her at recess." Well, my comment to that parent was, "Well, what happens at recess stays at recess." I could stand in front of you for hours talking about how I perceive my teaching, but what really matters is what my students think. So I decided to be brave, it's kind of hard, and ask 25 nine-year-olds what they thought. And here are just a few examples. A honest teacher. You care about us. You know all of our crushes. You help me forget about bad stuff outside of school. You make me never want to leave. You inspire us to never give up. You help us with our problems, and when she meant problems, she meant girl drama. Makes me feel like we're all a family. And eh, you're a pretty chill teacher. So there are three things I want to leave with you this evening. One, relationships are key to building a foundation for success. Two, it takes more muscles to frown than to smile. And lastly, always remember you want to be that chill teacher. Thank you.
In recognition of the awards, Ashley and Jericho's pictures have been placed alongside other USD 305 Horizon awardees. We have engraved plaques and apple pins for them as well. Congratulations. Last fall, members of NEA Salina selected Melinda Idol as the district's nominee from Poria State University's Master Teacher Awards Program. Today, we learned that Melinda was also selected to be one of seven recipients from across Kansas to receive an Emporia State University, Kansas, Master Teacher Award. Melinda has taught at USD 305 for 25 years, and this is her seventh year teaching kindergarten at Stewart. She has been active in school and district committees throughout her career, including Stewart's Character Education Program, New Teacher Mentoring, and Kagan Coaching. Melinda stays active in the community as a member of the Stewart Elementary Site Council, as a trustee for the Salina Education Foundation, and through her work with children's activities at her church. Now I invite Melinda to share some thoughts with you.
First, I have a lot of pages up here, but it's really big font. It's short. It's just that's what happens when you get to be my age. First, thank you. When they said I would have to give a speech, though, I began by asking my 15-year-old daughter for advice, which was probably my first mistake, and her advice was, "Don't worry, Mom, no one's really going to be listening to it." I don't really think that's how she quite meant it, but I didn't ask for any other advice. So here goes. Instead, I decided to let you in on the secret of my so-called success, and it's really all about luck. I can honestly say that I am absolutely no more deserving than anyone else I work with or have worked with over the years: luck. I was lucky enough to have been born into a family with parents that valued education. They saw the importance of reading to me at night, for studying spelling words, for practicing those math facts. I was lucky enough to have sisters that let me be the teacher once in a while when we played school. I was lucky enough to have teachers that brought books alive when they read aloud to me: luck. I was lucky enough to marry my high school sweetheart that has supported me from the beginning of my career. He's never complained with the long hours, the weekend work, the checkbook balance in August when I overspend in my classroom, the master's degree I just can't put myself to use because it means I would have to leave the classroom. He's never complained about the fact he's had to move my classroom 10 times in the 25 years I've taught. I'm lucky. I'm lucky to have three kids that have helped me along the way in my classroom, from sharpening pencils to playing Desk Fairy, to organizing my books and toys, to building Dr. Seuss trees and signs, that have, they've been some of my biggest help: luck. I've been lucky to have wonderful volunteers over the years. Volunteers that I might have only had the one year with their child, or for several years as I go through their family, and some just community member volunteers that I have had for years: luck. I've been fortunate to work under amazing administrators from the very beginning of my career, each one bringing something new and allowing me to grow as an educator. I've been incredibly lucky to work with so many other educators and support staff at several buildings in our district, and have gained lessons from each and every one of them. And of course, luck to work with other parents' most prized possessions: their children. There's no other profession I can imagine that could be as fulfilling as being a teacher. So that's how I got here today: luck. And if someone were to ask me what's the secret to success and lasting this long in the classroom, I really would have to say luck, and that it's also about acting. And I know that doesn't sound very professional, but it is the honest truth, and maybe some of the best advice I could give to a new teacher. Kids need to believe that I cannot wait for them to get in the classroom each morning, even mornings when maybe I'm not necessarily feeling that way myself. They need to believe that I'm so sad to see them leave for Christmas break, and I'm going to miss them like crazy. Most of the time, as educators, we do feel that way. The classroom is truly the most rewarding place to be, and by far, the majority of those days are ones that I can't wait for them to get in the room to try out whatever exciting learning activities I have planned. My students need to think that my lesson on combining numbers is the most exciting thing and the most important thing they're ever going to learn, and that I'm ever going to get to teach them. They need to think that they have the most beautiful handwriting on their published piece for our weather unit. That means that sometimes I have to be a really good actress. On mornings when I'm running behind and haven't finished everything that needs to be done before they come in, I still greet them at the door, and I act like I've been waiting there for hours, and I could not wait for them to get there. On afternoons, after an exhausting day of instruction, when we've had a full moon, snow falling, and it's Friday the 13th, which really did happen this year, I still need to give big hugs and smiles as I send them off for the weekend. And I need to have them know that I can't wait for them to get back over the weekend because I've got lots of exciting things planned for the next week. And I've learned that when students think their teacher misses them, they can't wait to get back to school. So that's it. That's the secret to my so-called success: luck and some good acting. Thank you.
Melinda, we extend to you our congratulations as the Salina Master Teacher of the Year. Your picture has been placed in this boardroom alongside the other outstanding educators, and we present to you a marble apple as a memento of this honor.
I appreciate it. Congratulations, and we'll be in Emporia with you.
Okay, we'll move along in our presentations to our bond update.
I believe each of you have the PowerPoint minimized on your desktop. If you want to go ahead and pull it up, or actually, I think it's a PDF.
Good evening. Our bond updates are getting shorter and shorter. Tonight, I'm going to start with South Middle School. We are working on the final phase of this project, which is turning the special ed classrooms into the last part of the front office suite. The framing and sheet rock are complete, and they have started painting this week. In the gymnasium, all the equipment, including the bleachers, are finally installed. The plant, the school plans to use the new gym for an event to be held on March 15th. We should be getting our temporary certificate of occupancy on that space very soon. We are waiting for one small piece of sidewalk to be poured. The re-roofing project for this school is nearing completion after a few hiccups early on. Bus boom and row will be required to reseed all of the areas on the site that have been disturbed by construction, and that'll happen once the weather warms up just a little bit more. And right now, the South Middle School project is trending to complete at the end of March. Stewart Elementary School has construction that is essentially complete. They are addressing punch list items now. The cabinets for the front office were originally ordered in the incorrect color, but that has now been corrected, and the staff is reporting that they love the change that the new laminate has made in the front office. The state fire marshal has been out for his final inspections. He had a handful of correction, corrections that needed to be made, and those have already been addressed. I have a meeting with the city of Salina tomorrow to talk about a new landscaping plan for Stewart Elementary School. Once that is finalized, then we'll get our final certificate of occupancy for this project. I'm hoping to be able to give my last update on Stewart at the next Board of Education meeting where I present a bond update. Sunset is pretty much in the same boat as Stewart. Construction is complete, and the contractors are working on punch list items. The state fire marshal has also visited this site, and corrections have been made. Sunset was grandfathered in early on and does not require a new landscaping plan, so that will not be any sort of hindrance for getting our final certificate of occupancy. The ribbon-cutting ceremonies for both Stewart and Sunset are scheduled for March 9th. I believe Stewart is at 6:30, and Sunset is at 7:30. So I hope to see everyone there. The Salina Adult Education Center is fully underway now. Footings have been poured, and the slab on grade and plumbing rough-in has also been completed. They are expecting the masons to be out either this week or next to begin laying the block for the storm shelter, and they'll be beginning erection of the walls hopefully later this week. Right now, this project is trending just slightly ahead of schedule. South High's East Wing is going to be turned over to the school in phases. The first phase is the first floor administration suite that we affectionately call G1. Plans are current, plans are currently to move into those spaces over spring break. G2 is the second floor administration offices, and we're also hoping to get moved into those spaces as well over spring break. The new classrooms are H1 and H2. Principal Stevens has created a phased moving plan for any spaces that do not get moved into over spring break that would rival anything that NASA could possibly have conceived. The picture you're looking at here is actually two of the new math classrooms. Eventually, there's going to be an operable partition that runs down the center, and will divide those two spaces. Right now, in G1 and G2, they're hanging the doors, putting the final cleaning touches on it, and they, those spaces were being punched out this morning. And each consecutive phase follows about a week behind the others. The final phase, or final area that'll be completed, will be the wood shop area. Demolition of the 300 pod will take place as soon as the school has completely vacated that pod, and right now, that is tentatively scheduled for mid-April. At Central High, the art and band and performing arts renovation have demolition that is completed. Framing is also complete, and they're ready for sheet rock. The new addition to the art and media classroom is seeing the windows going in, and the metal panels are going up. The interior framing in this space is about 98% complete, so it's moving along very nicely. The image that you see there is the exterior north side of the new art and media addition. Demolition of some second floor classrooms is done, and the framing has started. The CTE area has underslab rough-in complete, and the overhead rough-in is ongoing. The new gym is currently being used to store furniture for South High, and once that furniture has been moved over spring break, then they will put the final seal on the floor and give it its cure time. McAllen Gordon is working very closely with the school staff to prepare for what is going to be a very busy and hectic summer for them. That is all that we have left. So does anyone have any questions that I can answer?
I hope so. Just thinking about the demolition of the 300 pod at South High School, wow.
Yes. Wow. That's what we all say.
How much rubble do you think there will be, and where does it go? Does it go out to the landfill?
Mr. Upson, can you help me with this, please?
Yes.
Well, I could have said that.
It's the, and I'm going to correct Jamie, it's the 400 pod that comes down.
Oh, 400, well, either way.
Pod is a pod, is a pod.
Yeah, yeah, you got it.
There will be a giant pile of rubble. The 400 pod gets tricky because we still have some asbestos abatement to do.
Oh, boy.
So it's trickier still. Typically, one of those pods will probably come down in a couple of days. It's pretty easy when you just want to tear it down. So they'll bring in big equipment, and it'll go away. McAllen Gordon typically does a pretty good job at recycling, so some of that, some of those things will be stripped off and recycled, but a lot of it will go to the landfill, yes.
That'd be worth standing out there and watching.
Lawn chairs.
Yeah, wow. Okay.
Yes.
Can you remind us why the Adult Education Center is, the original budget is only half of the revised budget? Somebody probably remembers that, and I don't, so.
The original plan was to put just a pre-manufactured storm shelter in that space, and as we went through the design of all of the other projects, it became clear that we wanted to proceed in the same manner as we had with all the other schools.
So controlled entrance and all that stuff?
Yes, yep. All that's going to be part of it.
And I think also additional instructional spaces, is that not correct?
Right, they get another classroom as well. Yep.
Thank you.
And a bathroom.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of our consent agenda items, beginning with the minutes of the February 14th, 2017 regular meeting, our personnel report, our treasures report, our investment report, and our journal entries. We're approving incumbences to Ed Bozart Chevrolet in the amount of $69,784 for three new 2017 Chevy Traverse vehicles for Heartland, the purchase which will be funded from Head Start grant funds, to CDWG in the amount of $34,300 for the purchase of Google Chrome management licenses, and to Dell in the amount of $392,000 for the purchase of 1,400 Chromebooks. We're approving Central High fundraising activity, and approving South High fundraising activity. We're approving Oakdale Elementary School's 21st Century Grant intent to apply in the amount of $360,000 to continue Oakdale's after-school program. And we're also approving upward bounds intent to apply for a grant in the amount of $1,287,500.
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, a question about the laptops that are being replaced. Nothing real serious here, but who's currently using the laptops that will now be replaced with Chromebooks?
Well, marginally. Part of the reason, as X. Wrightup mentions, part of the reason we decided to go ahead and replace all of them is that upon inquiring with the schools and everything, these are a set of laptops that are the very last ones to use, if they can avoid it, because they take longer to boot up, they have, they power off repeatedly, they don't always recognize the monitors, they can't close, often you can't close the tops, because when you open them back up, they don't boot back up on their own, so you have to power them down, you lose work. So they're very problematic.
These are student use currently.
Yeah, they're student use.
In the various schools.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mostly in our elementaries at this time, and quite a few in our middle schools also.
I see, I see, I see. And they will be replaced then by the Chromebooks at this point.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much, Dwight. Appreciate that. What else did I? Oh, I wanted to say something about that upward bound program. Oh, my word. Oh, my word. Would you like to, yeah, talk a little bit about- Would you like to, yeah, talk a little bit about that?
Well, I can speak a little bit to that, and actually, I'll introduce Von Shonda Booker, who is the upward bound director, and so she's brought that to our schools, and we were talking to both Mr. Showman and Mr. Stevens earlier in the semester outlining the data that she needed for this grant, and so the application will be going in very soon, and hopefully, we will be awarded that grant. Would you like to say a few words about it?
Yes, I would. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me here. We are looking to have the upper bound grad, math, sorry, upper bound math and science grant, application submitted for 60 students from South and Central High School. This curriculum will be designed to strengthen these students' math skills and science. It'll be focusing on science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Those are the things we'll be doing for them. The grant is for five years. It would be funded from 2017 to 2022. Each year, it would be a budget of $257,500 for that year. That includes the staff, the program items for the students, stipends for the students, the courses, the classes. The wonderful thing about this program is that it's completely free to all participants that participate in this program. Essentially, we would be bringing them on campus, as it may say, polytechnic campus, allowing them to, each summer, to get acclimated to the college setting, focusing on STEM. In addition to that, in their senior year, we pay for up to six hours of college credit for these students that will be transferring to most of the colleges that they are going to. And again, the program is completely free to all of our participants.
The other thing that I think is really important about this is the, is the kind of student at which this is aimed. Would you mention something about that, because I think this is wonderful.
Absolutely. So essentially, the requirements for this program is going to be students that are residing in the home with a parent or both parents who have not received a bachelor's degree, a four-year degree. The other criteria, if they do have degrees, it will be based on the income for the Department of Education. So we don't go by gross income, we do go by taxable, so that makes a lot of our families who would often think that they are not eligible to be eligible for the program. Very rarely do we have students that are at risk academically. However, we do also take in those students to help to get their GPAs up as well, and those are the guidelines that are set by the Department of Education.
This just sounds like such a marvelous opportunity, and, oh, I hope that we have 60 kids that will be taking advantage of this. Oh, it's wonderful.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion on this?
Yeah, I move we approve the consent agenda items as listed.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on in our
Thank you.
Our agenda to our public forum. If anyone would like to address the board, now is your time. Seeing no one rushing up, we'll move on to our action agenda, starting with our South High BPA national competition out-of-state field trip with Ms. Montoy.
I'm a little bit stressed out, there with that 300 pod. Because I just moved 32 years' worth of stuff into my little tiny cubicle, so.
Surprise!
Do you just want me to tell you what's going on? Okay. About two weeks ago, we took eight students, seven from South and one from Central, to the state BPA, which stands for Business Professionals of America State Competition, and seven of the students qualified for the national competition, all from South, and they would like to get permission to go on to the national competition, which is in Orlando, Florida. And this is May 9th through May 13th, and we, I did meet with some parents because it is kind of a touchy date. It is the week of graduations, and six out of the seven are seniors. And the parents, we kind of agreed that we'd look for a Saturday night flight home instead of a Sunday, or, I mean, a Friday night flight home instead of a Saturday morning. And so it's probably more like May 9th through the 12th. And the only one that would miss four days of school is the junior. The seniors would miss three days, I believe, a day and two, the two final days. So they would have to make all that up before they left. They are, as you can probably guess, pretty outstanding students and pretty responsible, and we'd probably take care of that, or I would make them take care of that. We would go by vehicle to the airport. We're planning on flying out of Wichita and fly to Orlando. It is very expensive, as you can see. Last year, the most, when you let us go to Boston, the most that anyone had to pay was $97. We fundraised all the rest of it. So, do you have any questions about it, or?
Anyone like to make a motion on this?
Ms. President, I move that we approve the South High BPA trip to Orlando for the purpose of competition, and we wish the kids well. That's exciting.
That's exciting, okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Okay, when I left today, they said, "Good luck." They really drilled Eddie Creer. She said they were kidding. Thank you.
Well, on that note, all right. Let's move on to our ACT Aspire with Ms. X. Line.
Yeah, actually, Ms. X. Line is out ill today, but this, she presented a very detailed explanation at the last board meeting, unless there are specific questions. This is for the ACT Aspire, which will replace the MAP, current MAP assessment that we're using. It would be, it is aligned to the ACT, it would be a summative assessment of grades three, six, nine, and 10, and then interim assessments in four, five, seven, and eight. It's right in line with our vision that 100% of our kids graduate college and career-ready, and the advantage of ACT Aspires, it gives us some pretty good, or some early indicators in terms of college rate, and to see if they're at very young ages. And so with that, I would recommend to the board that we approve that to be implemented for my fall of 2017, 17, 18 school year.
Does anybody have any questions or want to make a motion? Anne?
I move that we approve the purchase of the ACT Aspire in the amount of $58,860.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we move on? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on. Are you going to present on the course proposals as well?
Yes, Madam President. Again, these were introduced at the, at the last board, at the last board meeting, I'm sorry. The first is Engineering Sound Production, and the second is Guitar, and these will be taught out of South High, but students will have the opportunity from both schools to take part. The guitar class is a, is an expansion of the class that we currently have at South Middle School, which is highly successful. And so with that, I would ask the board to, recommend to the board that we approve those two courses to be implemented in 17, 18.
Okay. Any questions or make a motion? Marian?
I move that we approve the addition of Engineering Sound Production semester for the first semester and the Guitar Class for the second semester, as presented last week, or two weeks ago, excuse me.
Okay, I have a motion and a second from Ramona. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to our 2017 summer school program with Ms. Richter.
I bring a program to you that looks very similar to what we have done in the past. With the exception of this year, we will expand summer school at the elementary level to kindergarten, and since we now have an all-day kindergarten program, we wanted to make sure that we had that opportunity available to our students for any kind of summer support that they may need. With this program, we're looking at, it's just one day shy of five weeks. We go from May 30th to June 30th. The reason that we stop at June 30th is because it's on a Friday, and what we have found historically is that students do not come back for a July 3rd date, so we are going to end that on June 30th. At the high school level, we have multiple kinds of offerings. We have credit recovery for students who have basically failed a course, and this allows them to be able to access that core academic class that they may need to, to earn that credit and be able to move forward towards graduation. We also offer several classes that help students kind of free up their schedule just a little bit, Computer Apps 1, Computer Apps 2, and Speech, and these classes basically are being offered as kind of the full course, and so students may take this for the very first time, or if they need to recover that credit, they can take it as well. Then we have driver's education, and so that program follows the state guidelines for driver's education and the skills, the students to get some driving experience, and then also to prepare for that permit test. And so that has both the classroom component and then a driving component. And then with the ACT Preparation, it's a little bit shy of two weeks, and that course is basically kind of an in-depth course just right before the June ACT test, and they're going to focus on strategies and skills that they need to, to be able to do their very best on the ACT, and it actually is going to be modified to meet the, the new requirements for the ACT test. So the individual that's working with me on that particular program is updating it and making sure that we have our students fully prepared for that new test. At the middle school level, we're looking at our core academic classes, and it's a little bit different in the sense that they're not necessarily making up credits, but we're looking at students who have performed at a level that the teachers feel that they need a little bit more support or opportunity to access some of that core academic work. And they use Edgenuity Program, which is a customizable curriculum program that we use that has lots of different components to it, and it's what we use during the school year in both our performance-based diploma programs and after-school credit recovery during the school year. And then at the elementary school, like I said, we are expanding it to be kindergarten, to include kindergarten this year. We're excited about that. Our numbers last year were down a little bit with the elementary summer school enrollment, so hopefully, what we'll see this year is that with the expansion of kindergarten, we'll be able to, we'll still be able to meet all of the student needs, because we do believe that our numbers will be within the range, that, that we have funds set aside, and at the summer school for elementary, it is at-risk funds that we set aside and plan for those programs. The director that we have for elementary right now is Cheryl Worth, and she has been doing it for several years. At the secondary level, we have advertised that position, and hopefully, within the next week or so, we'll be able to appoint the secondary school director for summer school. We have many up-and-coming leaders that have applied for that position, so I will be finishing that up. Transportation is provided at the middle school and elementary levels, and we do a variety of pickup locations at the elementary buildings, and then as we look at the students that are taking that, if we need to expand that, there have been some other locations expanded to try to meet the students' needs. At the elementary, they also coordinate this with providing lunch, and so we do provide lunch at the elementary level. So if there's any questions, I would love to entertain those.
And that was at Lakewood and Cottonwood?
Yes, sorry. The locations for secondary is going to be at Lakewood, and this is, I think this may be the third year that it was at Lakewood, and this is due to the construction, and so Lakewood does not have any construction this summer, and then we have moved it back to Cottonwood, and that gives us a little bit more of a centralized location, but we'll be done with the construction at Cottonwood, and so that's the location we're using for elementary.
Okay. Madam President?
Yes.
I move we approve the 2017 summer school program as presented.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have one last question, if you might humor me, and you might have said it, and it just kind of went over my head, but what was the criteria? Are, we were kind of lower in our numbers for elementary this year, or last year, I'm sorry, last summer. Are we expecting that trend to continue? Are we opening up the restrictions on that, or how, how is that gonna look?
Actually, with the elementary, one of the things that we were looking at, and as I was talking to the elementary director and the elementary principals, we are looking at the criteria that is used to identify students at the elementary level, and we're making sure that we're gonna make it a little bit more inclusive than it had been at the past. And so really wanting to make sure that the students that need this opportunity have access to this opportunity. And so that's one of the areas that we think will expand our numbers a little bit, and then also adding the kindergarten students.
So possibly, when you come back to give us our wrap-up, whenever you do that, I don't remember, in August, those numbers, we should expect them to increase?
We should, yes.
Okay. Okay, sorry, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign.
Did you have a second?
Yeah. I did. All those in favor, same sign. Passes seven zero, sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our notice of intent to follow an alternate project delivery with Mr. Eppson.
Good evening. Like to talk tonight briefly about the Salina Stadium project. As you recall, the board authorized us to move forward with that project. Phases one and two have already been completed. That's the, was the annex work and the turf. Phases three, four, and five are a new press box, repairs to the concrete bleacher seating, and then bathrooms and concessions. So I want to talk tonight about my recommendation to use an alternate delivery method, project delivery method. That's what the state calls construction management at risk, which is the same contract style that we've used on both of our two high schools. So some of the requirements of that is we, there's a, a list of requirements that have to be looked at and thought about, and so I'll read through those now and, and give you my thoughts on those. So there are five factors that need to be considered by the board in determining this type of delivery process. These factors are listed below. Number one is the likelihood that the alternative project delivery method of procurement selected will serve the public interest by providing substantial savings of time or money over the traditional design, build, and delivery process. Construction management at risk doesn't save you money necessarily, it helps you spend your money better. So it's all about the value proposition, and when I look at the construction value, I look at the cost of construction, the quality of the work that you get, and how fast you can get it. And so that arithmetic, the addition of those three things, gives me the value proposition. So the alternative delivery method allows you to optimize those three components of your project. In this case, we, we have the goal of having the press box and the stadium seating done before the football season. We host the 4A state championship football game, so it's kind of a big deal that we get that up and running for, for that, for sure, and the goal would be to have it, have it up and running for the football season. So this, this alternative delivery method, in this case, allows us to focus on the time component of the value proposition, and then, in, in so doing, balance that with the quality that we get and the money that we will spend. Number two, the ability to overlap design and construction phases is required to meet the needs of the end user. That's very much a requirement of ours right now. Were we to design this completely and do a bidding process, we would be well into the football season before we would even start to think about doing construction. So this will allow us to begin work this summer and, and, and still be completing the design, much like we did at both of our two high schools. Number three is the use of an accelerated schedule is required to make repairs resulting from an emergency situation. This one is not applicable in our situation. We don't have an emergency. The project, number four, the project presents significant phasing or technical complexities or both, requiring the use of an integrated team of designers and constructors to solve project challenges during the design or pre-construction phase. We have fairly significant phasing challenges with this project in putting a new press box on top of the stadium, revamping the stadium, and doing construction in a pretty tight spot, in a pretty active place in the school district. So there are some challenges there that the CM process will help us solve collectively. Number five, the use of an alternative project delivery method will not encourage favoritism in awarding the public contract or substantially diminish completion of the public contract. We've got three constructors in town that are, that are capable of doing a project of this size, and all three have done some of our bond projects, for example. All three have done construction management at risk projects before and are competent at doing them, so I don't believe that we are, we are diminishing or, or taking away the opportunity for local involvement. Kind of a caveat to number five is the ability for the constructor and us to be a little bit more selective in the, in the selection of subcontractors. We don't have to take the low-bid subcontractors if we don't want to. When a, when a, when a contractor is doing a sealed bid, they're gonna take the low bid that they get because they know that the guy next to them's gonna take that same bid, and they're trying to win the work. And so even though they may think this subcontractor, I'm really worried about them being able to complete the work, they'll take the number because they know that their, their counterpart, their peer is gonna take that number, and then it could put them out of the running. So this, this method allows you to really think through who you're picking to do this subcontract work, and thankfully, we've got almost three years' worth of bond construction under our belt with experience with just about every subcontractor, local or otherwise, to, to kind of help us with that. At any point, the board can decide to abandon the CM process and go back to a more traditional process. process. At any point, to, up to and including through the interview process with the CM firm. So, we're not set that we have to do this, but we can, this, a vote today would allow us to start that process of soliciting for qualifications and then shortlisting the list of qualified people and then starting the interview process, much the same as we did for the high schools. Can I answer any questions at this time?
You may have covered this, but it mentions in our motion, the selection recommendation committee. What is the function of that committee specifically?
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's mentioned that there will be a selection recommendation committee to proceed in the selection process. And specifically, what does that committee do?
So, that language comes straight out of the state statutes? And essentially, what that committee is, is the board and myself and Bill Hall.
So, this is the way we did it before?
Yes. The way that we did it before.
What we will do is we will make a request for qualifications and interested firms then will provide those. One thing we are going to do differently this time is that, if you recall, we had the packets and materials and supporting stuff. I think there were trinkets and things that were kind of thrown in there in the process. There's an extra selling point there. But this time, we're going to request everything electronically. So, that will expedite the process. Once we have those, we'll have a rubric in place, and we will ask the board to provide their input on the rubric after they've had an opportunity to review each of the requests for qualifications. Based on the results of that rubric, then we will sit down and narrow it down to a list of probably two or three, probably three firms that we will bring in and ask the board to interview. And if you recall, those of you that were involved in that process, it's quite a lengthy process. It's about an hour for each firm. So, we're already kind of targeting early April.
April 4.
April 4 is an evening meeting, April 4, to bring in maybe three different firms to have the board interview them directly. So, you will be actively involved in that selection process.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't in on the earlier process, but I am not knowledgeable about how to choose construction firms. And I'm hoping that you will provide us with some ideas about what kind of questions we should be asking. What helps you figure out what makes a good contractor and manager?
Absolutely. So, the interview process is in executive session and the dialogue. And at that point, there's no discussion. It's an interview and Q and A. The discussion part is in open session. And last time, you know, much of you, many of you were in the same situation as Ann the first time. And it is a very back-and-forth dialogue about what things mean. And, you know, if I remember right, we had quite a bit of dialogue back and forth. So, absolutely, we will not go into this blindly and we'll help out.
You know, one thing I would-
I'll do math because I'm an engineer, so there'll be some math.
One thing I would add to what Mr. Eppson shared is that he has a lot of the expertise that certainly will come in handy for the board. But I also would mention to you as well that, and I recall those interviews distinctly, is that the board really has to be comfortable with whichever firm that you decide to go with. And more, it's a lot more than the engineering stuff that Chris is talking about. A lot of it's just a fill. It's just being comfortable with the firm that you're going to, that's going to represent you to do this project. And that's one that I'm confident any one of you sitting at this table can make that decision. You know, so I wouldn't get so caught up in the technical expertise of things. It's really just comfort, more than anything else. It's a comfort level that you want to put your vote of confidence in for which firm you want to recommend.
What I'm trying to do, maybe uniquely with this solicitation, this is a budget of about $3.5 million, where the high schools was about $80 million. So, for the firms that showed up, when we did our high schools, they were spending between $15,000 and $20,000 just putting their proposal together. And we don't want that because that's money they can't get back. And firms know, I'm not going to invest this amount of money in prep for this. So, I'm trying to simplify the proposal process so that you don't scare away folks that are like, I don't even want to mess with that. And so, it will be not quite as, I'm trying to make it not quite as intensive. Purposeful, yes, not quite as intensive as it was with the high schools. Are there any other questions?
I have a motion. I move that this board approve the intent to utilize a construction management at risk procurement process for the design, construction, renovation, and repair at Salina Stadium. Additionally, the board will authorize the superintendent of schools to form the selection recommendation committee to proceed in the selection process.
All right. I have a motion. Motion and a second. Any additional discussion before we vote? Not seeing any. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on in our agenda to our discussion items, which we apparently have none, I will move on to our school board reports and upcoming dates of importance, beginning with Thursday, March 9th is our Stewart ribbon cutting and open house at 6:30 PM. And also, Thursday, March 9th is our sunset ribbon cutting open house at 7:30 PM. Saturday, March 18th is our chamber legislative meeting at the Chamber Annex Building at 8:30 AM. Sunday, May 7th is the retirement reception and recognition at Lakewood at 3 PM. Thursday, May 11th is the DCP graduation at Salina West at 4 PM. And then, Sunday, May 14th is the graduations at the, I don't believe it's the By Center anymore, but I don't remember what it's called.
Tony Pizza Event Center.
I don't even want to talk about it. I don't even want to talk about it. South High School is going to go first.
Did I say something wrong?
High School is going to go first at 2 PM, and Central High will follow at 5 PM. Thursday, May 18th is the SAEC graduation ceremony at 7 PM. And Thursday, May 20th is the chamber legislative meeting, also the Chamber Annex at 8:30 AM. Brett, would you like to start us off with our, it's not committee reports anymore, it's just board reports?
I have nothing to say.
I attended the legislative forum on the 18th of February and came away not knowing much more than what I had been reading all week.
I don't believe I have any reports.
I too attended the chamber legislative meeting and then also the NEA executive board meeting.
I attended the chamber ledge meeting on February the 18th as well, and CKCIE meeting on February 15th. Briefly, the state has finally released $159,000 in Medicaid reimbursements. That's not the full sum owed, but it was nice to get a down payment. CKCIE is looking at staffing needs for 2017-18. And I think I mentioned last time, shortage of school psychologists. And Mike Lowers mentioned that the state will be short 40 school psychologists within the next couple of years. And finally, the new additions to South Middle School and the new Salina High School South building are going to provide areas for functional life skills. And that's going to be very important for quite a segment of our population.
No report.
What?
I know.
Well, hold yourselves back. I finally have a report. So, since we changed this, that it's not just committee reports, I went to the South High Thoroughly Modern Millie on Saturday. This is just two weeks, by the way, two weeks. So, Thoroughly Modern Millie at South High. I went to the winter band concert for South Middle School, also held at South High. I made it to the Excel Program's It Matters at the city. I also attended Salina West graduation. We had a Parks and Rec meeting. And I also attended the chamber legislative update and spoke to a lot of our legislators there. So, everything was amazing. I spoke to lots of teachers, and parents were always excited to talk about their kids and what instruments they're playing and, or what part they're playing. So, that's always fun to see. And the It Matters was a really amazing presentation, I think. There was a couple of other board members that I know were in attendance as well. To be able to meet Cheryl Brown of Brown versus Board of Education was an amazing opportunity. So, and then Parks and Rec was just Parks and Rec. We never really do much there, so. I guess we will go on to our superintendent's report.
And don't fail to mention that our commissioner of education was also in President It Matters. And I thought that was nice of Dr. Watson to be there.
And there was also board members from the McPherson Board of Education were there as well.
And I think that might go back to that being Dr. Watson's prior district. There's a connection, I'm sure. But it was great to see dignitaries there, and the kids were fabulous. They were just fabulous. So, a few things to report. Legislative update, I wish I could report some good things. The governor's veto was not overridden on the tax bill. I had the opportunity, those of you that were in attendance at the legislative forum, I was there as well. I kind of probably have to agree with Mary Ann there that I'm not sure I came out of that knowing a lot more than what I went in. But it was interesting because shortly after that, that was on Saturday, the Wednesday after that, I had the opportunity to attend the Salina at the State House and got on a bus and sponsored by Chamber. We had city leaders and government leaders from across the Salina, who I think we had about 20 of us that rode to DePica, had the opportunity to meet with the Secretary of Commerce, had the opportunity to meet with the Secretary of Transportation, had the opportunity to meet with Brian Lewin Swander, who's the Deputy Commissioner of Education. And so, those were very informative. After that, we had each of our legislators come in and visit with us. And so, that was nice to see each one of them come in. And that was right at the time when the tax bill had already been passed by both houses and everyone was wanting to know what will the governor do. And as luck would have it, we met with the governor that afternoon. And we spent about an hour with Governor Brownback and visited about a lot of things, about Kansas, visited about a lot of things about Salina. This is very, very good conversation. And then Eric Brown kind of asked the $10 million question, so governor, are you going to veto that? And he didn't really want to say, you know. But then later that evening, it was discovered, it was announced that the governor did in fact veto the tax bill. And they were not able to muster enough votes to override that veto. So, we still do not have a revenue bill in place. I know that both houses continue to work. Our esteemed representative, Representative Johnson, who's the chairperson of the House Tax Committee, is working diligently on trying to bring something back that they believe that they can get enough votes mustered to pass. They need to keep in mind the fact that we are facing about a $600 million shortfall for FY '18. So, school funding formula aside, allotments aside, there has to be more revenue coming in at some point in time. They've got to figure out a way to fill the hole, and that's a problem. That being the case, I had an opportunity to visit with Senator Hardy, kind of where they are in terms of allotments for K-12 for the current fiscal year. They did have a proposal at one point in time, and they couldn't even get enough votes to muster discussion, to have a 5% across-the-board cut. Neither house could come up with enough votes to even want to talk about it, which tells you that the climate, the political climate, has changed. So, they didn't want to have that conversation. He believes that right now, the proposal is more about maybe a 1%. It's going to be very difficult for K-12 to get out of this without any type of a budget cut for the current fiscal year. A 1% for us would be about, I mean, $300,000, $200,000 to $300,000. A 5% was about 1.8 million, you know. And so, it's a pretty hefty cut that they're talking about. But somehow, they've got to balance the current year and then start looking at next year. So, a lot of things happened. And all in all, I tell you, it was a good visit. It was really good because we had an opportunity, not just with K-12, but to bring in city and county leaders. And it was really an interesting fill, an interesting taste, because we're bringing in different perspectives. Because everyone has a different perspective about what's happening legislatively that is impacting them. And so, it was a very interesting conversation that I had an opportunity to be a part of for that particular day. So, it was a good visit. Also, a couple of weeks ago, had the opportunity with Ms. Rector. We even brought, had a number of folks attend and visit Salina West, or not Salina, Wichita West High School in Wichita to really take a look at their restorative practices program. They've been doing that for, I think, nine years, I think they said. So, they're very ingrained into restorative practices. And it was a very, very good visit. I was there at least for a couple of hours to listen to the conversation, and then I had to get back for a funeral. But I think the rest of the folks stayed there and actually had an opportunity to walk through the school and meet with some folks and came back with some really good ideas in terms of restorative practices in public schools and what that looks like. And it's kind of nice because now we have a network and a support that we can go to for as we move forward, as we start moving out with restorative practices in our schools. Had the opportunity last week to attend the Kansas Western University etiquette dinner at Martinelli's. And that was an interesting event. I had, they invited me to attend. There were a number of CEOs that were part of that. But they invited students. Some of them were seniors and some of them were underclassmen. But the whole point of that was to teach students who are on the verge of graduating or close to within a year or two, what it's like to have a dinner in a professional setting and what does etiquette look like. And it was really interesting because I had the opportunity to get an advanced look. As luck would have it, they put, there was a table of eight, and I had myself and seven education majors. And so, they kind of viewed it as an opportunity to have a preliminary interview, you know, which was kind of nice. But I had an opportunity to meet each one of them as well. And I got to be very honest, I learned a lot about etiquette that evening that maybe I didn't even know about. So, it was good. It was an excellent, it was the first time they'd done this, but it was really interesting how they do that.
Did you pass food from left to right or right to left?
We passed it from left to right. I learned that one, Ms. Brander. They said one thing, that was like the cardinal rule. You do not pass left under any circumstance. And I'm like, well, she's really hungry. They said, it doesn't matter, go all the way around, all right? It'll come back. You know, so yeah, I did learn a lot about etiquette. You know, I learned a lot about eating from the outside in. I learned a lot about how to fold your napkin properly. So, you know, it was a good, it was a good event. I thought it was really an interesting event because they used that as an opportunity to teach their students about how to transition to the professional world. And so, I thought that was very interesting. Also, had the opportunity and to attend, as president, Salina Rotary Club. We had a Rotary Centennial Celebration. So, Salina Rotary Club is 100 years old this year. And so, that was kind of nice to do that a few weeks ago out at the country club. Tomorrow, I'm going to be extremely fortunate to start working on the Riverman Scholarship screening. And we have a number of, I think about 30 students who have made application for Riverman Scholarships. And so, we're going to start going through the screening process. And we'll interview some students from both South and Central next week for the Riverman Scholarship, and we award those in the spring. And last but not least, this is going to be a selfish self-promotion, but on Friday with Dancing with Salina Stars, I am finalizing my steps. Some of you may have seen a video out there. And so, it didn't look too bad. It didn't look too great, but it didn't look too bad either. And so, hopefully, I mean, I now sit at Rotary, so I'm carrying the Rotary banner. I now sit at Rolling Hills today, so I told them I'm carrying the Rolling Hills banner. So, you know, rah rah, help me out, give me some votes because the spectators choose the winner. And so, that's all I'm going to say about that. I am, I'm getting through it, but I'm very sore. And it has not, but it's been fun. I need to, the biggest plug on that is it's a fundraiser for Salina Community Theater. That's the big deal. Because it really does help one of our local institutions that is phenomenal in terms of the work that they do, not only across the community, but for our kids. When I've had an opportunity to meet students, I'm always amazed at how many of our students, before they even get to high school, have already had experience in the community theater. And so, they just do phenomenal work. And so, when I heard about that, I had to at least seize that opportunity to be part of it. So, that's all I have, Madam President. Yes.
I wonder if we could mention Mike Lowers and the award he received?
Yes, Mike Lowers received a national prestigious award from President's Learning for the work that he's done with respect to the, it was the SOP online services and being a leader in terms of the speech, language, pathology services that we're offering online. And so, with that, I mean, he had, actually, they had a nice write-up in the paper. Harold Campbell did a nice write-up for him. So, congratulations, Mike, on all the work that you've done and being a leader for that. Very good.
All right. Anything else? Do we need an executive session?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to request 30 minutes, please, for personnel.
Would anyone like to make that motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education go into the executive session